These aren't ours.
Meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Quayleary.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Gaines.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilwoman Manis.
Here.
Here. Do I hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The prayer this evening will be given by Councilman McBride. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for all your many blessings and for your protection on us. And I pray now that you'd be with us in this meeting. I pray that you would be with the employees of the city and those who are administrators. I pray that you would give them wisdom each day to do their job. I pray for safety for each of them and their families. Father, again, thank you for your many blessings and go with us now and give us the wisdom we need to conduct the business on behalf of the city. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, Jim. Do I hear a motion for the review and approval of amendments of the previous meeting dated January 23, 2023?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we'll recognize any visitors or citizens here this evening. Start with praises first. Yes, ma'am. Approach the podium, state your name and address, please. That's fine.
We're going together. Is that okay?
That's fine. You can state your all's name and addresses, please.
Dana Worthington, 438 Eagle Ben Road.
Sandra Harvard, Rioport East Weaver Street.
Kevin Powers and Nina Thompson Kit, who lives at 509 Eagle Ben. They can't be here tonight.
Okay, I'm Sandra.
Can you speak to, in the microphone, please?
I don't like that.
Well, it's the people for home that needs to hear this, ma'am.
All right. Okay, I'm Sandra. I live in Weaver Street. I pay my insurance every month and I go across the street. And it concerns to me because about three times, I almost got an accident with the cars coming from Eagle Ben. It's too much traffic, about 3:30, 2:45. It's very high, the traffic. And I just wonder what you can do for us because it's too much trouble.
Where do you cross the road?
I go steep paths, pay my insurance. I live across the street.
Well, I guess, I guess, first of all, maybe Roger can jump in too. I mean, there is a crosswalk there, which would be-
Where?
At the intersection of Weaver and Eagle Ben.
No, sir.
She's not talking about that.
Is that-
She's talking about pulling out, being on the road. She's almost gotten hit.
Are you, you're not walking, you're driving?
Uh, no.
Wait, no, you're driving or no, you're walking?
I'm being interrogated. Hello, excuse me.
I'm just asking-
This is not the, this isn't the judge and jury, but even-
I'm just asking a question.
... citizens, and we have a right to speak without being interrogated because that's what we're trying to do.
Well, first of all-
And that's not what we want.
First of all, let's just have one person speak at a time. Dana, if you don't mind, just take a seat behind her and you can talk when it's your time to talk. We only take one person at a time.
Okay, as long as you treat her-
I, I just asked a question. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to ask-
It took me a long time to come in at this place because I don't want you questioning me.
Well, the only question I had was-
I live here, I pay my taxes, I work. Okay, so I, if I wanna drive my car to the insurance, I can do that. But I have rights to walk from my front door to the insurance and pay my bill.
I understand what you're saying, but if you want more safety, that's why we have the crosswalk. You can walk, if you're walking.
I don't wanna do that.
Well, that's called jaywalking, ma'am.
So you see what I mean?
Is that not jaywalking?
That is what I don't want to come here because you all not listening when I'm trying to tell you.
Von, can you interject at all on that, or?
I'm not sure what she's talking about.
I don't either. That's why I'm asking.
Okay, I'm, I want to just, off the record here, nobody heard one word she said. And all you did was, was twist things around. She tried to tell you that she lives on Weaver Street-
Yes, ma'am.
And she's had incidents where she's almost been hit. We're talking about vehicles and/or people.
Dana, one thing I want to ask, was she driving or was she walking? That's the only thing I asked.
Does it matter?
Well, yeah, it does. From a city, it should be.
If you're walking, okay, if you walk across the crosswalk, your life is in mortal danger. And Officer Beggar's seen plenty of video. I've sent to him. And now he knows that somebody was going through there at 33 today and CUB went through at 30, and people are misbehaving. Now, tonight, it's about Weaver Street and the intersection. It's not about me or Eagle Ben or my house. And it's dangerous, and it's breaking the law. And I just want to ask Officer Beggar, is it against the law to run through a stop sign?
Yes, it would be.
Okay. And if I witness that over and over and over again, and I call you and I've asked you to do something about it, and I've talked to several people here, and nothing's getting done, and then when a very kind person comes in here with a legitimate question, she's put in a position where you don't understand her. Is it because she's from another country or because you just don't understand her?
No.
Is that all about?
Dana, we just give two minutes to speak, and I think you've taken two minutes.
Okay, and we would like to have something done.
Ma'am, if I offended you, that was not my intention. I certainly, I do apologize.
Well, it's still that way. Nobody ever, can somebody else talk besides you though?
Ma'am, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Over here.
Yes.
So if you see somebody run a stop sign, you gotta be the one to come to court and testify, not the police officer. Police officer didn't see it, he can't write the ticket.
We know that.
And you're willing to do that?
I'm not willing to do anything. I've already done all I can do. What I'm asking you to do, what you consider-
I'm not gonna write the ticket, but if you see it, you gotta, you gotta be the witness in that case. You have to be the witness.
I am on a daily basis. Can I make a video and send it?
No. You have to ask City Judge that. I couldn't tell you that. You have to be the witness.
Why is it such an argument?
Not an argument.
To not do something that's right. It's not position right, it's not safe, it's not effective, and it, and nobody minds it, and it's being ran constantly, and I've been a near victim of it. And I don't understand why. Just take me out of the equation, just look at the situation. Why would that have anything to do, I mean, I'm not the police. That's why I'm here. I'm not the judge or the police or the, him. I'm not any of you all, so I'm just-
Dana, your time's up. Thank you. You have two minutes. And again, I do apologize.
I think we need an answer of some sort. Why is it such a problem to do the right thing?
Every time we talk, you, you think we're being defensive. We're just trying to clarify.
Well, nobody's come up with a solution right now.
Well, again, your two minutes is up.
Where do we do that?
Your two minutes is up. Thank you. Anyone else?
And nobody else has anything to say? Not even you, Wendy?
Well, I, I am wondering, like, what can we do to stop that? Like, I mean, is there a solution that might be temporary or that we could look at and discuss later?
You talking about a solution to, for people to run a stop sign?
No, just like the speeding in general past her house. I know she's come several times, so I don't know if there's like a solution that might help her and help that whole street. Because I've heard from several people, especially like when the plants get off, they, they're driving pretty fast through there.
Roger, could you kind of catalog the things that we've done there?
Well, of course, you know, we put two speed humps, I guess, about this time last year in the two sections that the traffic engineer requested. Of course, the, the section of, of the, I guess it's the 400 block where Ms. Worthington lives, we've looked at a few things there. But with the Hammer's Warehouse remaining, at one time, we had heard they might sell it. We thought of a couple ideas there, maybe a medium or something there. But from my understanding, they're not gonna sell it now. So with them still bringing tractors and trailers in and out of the warehouse, the medium wouldn't work because we couldn't, couldn't block it, where they couldn't get tractors and trailers in. You know, we're hoping when we start the streetscape project on Market, which is narrow, and Market Down, that's probably gonna keep some traffic off of Eagle Ben also. You know, that project just has got delayed several times. We thought, you know, this time last year, we thought we'd be well into construction on that. Right now, we're looking, we finally got, what be a week and a half ago, we got the environmental approval about a week and a half ago. So it looks like now, probably by early summer, we'll be ready to go to bid on that project. So that, that'll probably help some, alleviate some of the traffic on Eagle Ben, because people will not want to come on down Eagle Ben, I wouldn't think, onto more narrow street, onto Market. So that'll help some. Then, of course, too, you know, we've talked about, probably sometime in March, we're gonna do a workshop, talk about two or three projects. And one of them's gonna be, do, do, does council want to come up with some kind of policy on speed humps and what that policy may look like? I think we sent a sample one out that knocks counties. And if it does, you know, it puts some of the, the emphasis back on the neighborhood to, to whether or not the neighborhood wants it, not just an individual. So, so that'll be probably the major, one of the things we talked about this workshop, we've not set a date yet. I've pulled some of you on a couple of dates, and we'll finish doing that. When we set that workshop, of course, that'll be a workshop open to the public, and we'll publicize the date, time, and location of it. And anybody will be more than welcome to come and give their input then.
Also, what did the speed studies show down there?
You know, and Chief Beggar can probably speak to more to that. You know, of course, the, the sign's been up for a while, and it just does an average speed. It doesn't, it's not the one that does it in the, the exact. But over the period of time that it's been up, I think Bonnie's pretty much showed an average of-
About 18 miles per hour?
18 miles per hour is the average speed there. And of course, I'm sure there's some that speed there. I'm sure that some does 30 and 33, as Ms. Worthington says, but there's some that probably does 23 or 18 or less. So I'm, I'm sure there's, could be speeders. There's speeders on my street, there's speeders, I'm sure, in Westwood. There's other streets I get called about speeding. There's speeders on the Boulevard.
Here's the picture I sent Officer Beggar this morning, 33, handling past Weaver Street yet.
For the past couple of weeks, I've had a couple guys doing traffic enforcement at the target through the, the 33, 26. And sometimes they, some of that, just over time, some of the, the, the city, but it's been very active, so often at times, doing traffic enforcement all through the city.
And, you know, yes, you know, we work four officers to a shift to cover 72 miles of streets in the city. You know, I'd like to have 10 officers to a shift, but you know, to do that would take a pretty significant tax increase to do. And, and you know, the same with the fire department and other departments. So you know, we, we have, you know, what we feel is low taxes with good services, but, but to be able to put more guys out there to, to traffic control and, and better respond to fires and EMS calls, it, it takes more people and more money.
Are there currently crosswalks on either end of that block?
There is at Weaver and Eagle Ben. I'm not sure. I, I think there is at the Boulevard side, but I don't know if there's one in the middle of the street.
No, there's not.
There's not.
I don't think there is. Of course, as, as we talked before, those crosswalks, according to our historian Bill Riggs, those were put in when T.DOT built the Boulevard and, and did, redid Weaver Street. So those were put in several years ago and engineered by T.DOT engineers. You know, I don't know on a, if, I, I don't know if it would meet the requirements to put one at Hendrickson. It'd be something we'd have to defer to our traffic engineer and let him look at. I don't know if it's too big of a blind spot coming up the hill. I'm not, I'm not sure.
I'm looking on maps.
That's Weaver Street.
And I'm seeing a crosswalk.
Well, on Weaver Street at Hendrickson.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing a crosswalk at Severs and, the Severs Inn and the Eagle Ben Inn.
Yeah, but not in the middle, where she-
This one, this one shows.
If she's walking directly across to Pike's.
Oh, not up, not up in the middle of the street, no.
There is no crosswalk.
She's gotta walk, she's gotta walk to the end of the street and then go across.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excuse me, but can we work together as friends in a team and just let me say a couple more things that aren't being, I'm not trying to be rude or cruel to anyone. I just want to clarify just a couple of things. Is that okay with you?
You talking to me?
Yeah, I mean, by that, it's, I don't base, as friends, here it's-
That's basically-
I'm trying to give you some information, and you didn't want to receive the information from me, okay?
I can't, I'm not a big police worker.
Well, I think if you, I think if you had some, some issues, I mean, I'd go with, you know, talk to Von Becker or even Roger. You know, we like to keep this two or three minutes, and, and we've already gone way over.
We understand, but where else can we talk? Where else is there to go? Who, who's the next person in the city besides you all? I mean, isn't this it? I mean, you're all of them.
Talk to the good Lord. I don't know.
You're the end all of all, so I won't be like that. I'm just gonna go ahead.
I'm sorry, I, I have nothing else.
Really, please feel free. I'm gonna do two seconds.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? We're gonna move on. Communications for the mayor. I do have a proclamation for Janet Hawkins, and just recognize her service as, with the Chamber of Commerce, started in 1976. Very, very strong career with, with the chamber, and we'd like to recognize her with a proclamation. Hear a motion for approval on that?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I don't have anything else. I'm under community reports. City School Board report. Kelly Johnson.
Good evening. A couple of Clinton City updates for you tonight. We have awarded our Teacher of the Year at all three of our schools. So we are proud to announce that at Clinton Elementary School, Jamie Terry is our Teacher of the Year. She teaches kindergarten at Clinton Elementary. At North Clinton Elementary, we have Jill Smithson. She was our sixth grade teacher, and then we moved her to fourth grade just a few weeks ago, but she has been with us for several years. And actually, she has won three times. And then at South Clinton Elementary School, we have Erin Collier, who teaches fifth grade with us at South Clinton. Our Principal of the Year is Leann Bonestil. She is our principal at South Clinton Elementary School. And then our SRO of the Year is Officer Chris Mavill. He is our officer at North Clinton Elementary. And he also does our, all of our truancy issues district wide. And he does an absolute fabulous job integrating himself into the school, getting to know the kids, and, and letting us know kind of things that are, that are brought into where we can be proactive instead of reactive. We do have spring break in two weeks, and so we'll finish up this weekend, next week, and then we will be three-fourths of the way through our school year. So it's moving fast and furious. I do want to let everyone in the public know that we are beginning the registration process for next school year. And so we will be doing our kindergarten roundup. We're doing it a little bit differently this year. With our kindergarten roundup in March, it is gonna be for city residents only. And so we are currently taking appointments right now in central office. Parents can call 457-0225 and make an appointment. But we will be doing roundup at Clinton Elementary on March the 30th. And then, let's see, North Clinton will be March 28th, and South Clinton will be March 27th. So the 27th, 28th, and 30th will be when we do registration inside the school buildings for city residents only. And then we will open up the transfer period on April the 3rd through May 15th for transfer students. We have made that change, as you know, with TESA and the small school stuff. And we've talked about that before. It's very important that we keep our enrollment under 1,000 with the new funding formula that's coming. And it's also important, just facility-wise, that we stay under 1,000. And so you are going to see over the next, next few years, us tighten up on, as the city continues to grow and we have more city residents, we will have to tighten up on the transfers that we accept. But we want to make a good faith effort that we are allowing all of the spots for city residents first before we open that up to transfers. So with that, Scott Ray is under the weather tonight. He went home with the sniffles today. And so I am gonna bring to you Budget Amendment Number Three. There's nothing real significant in this budget amendment, other than just we are having to recognize some federal funds that we have gotten some from, from many of our federal grants. And then in the general purpose fund, we did have to move some of those federal funds into GP as per the grant guidelines to spend it in GP. But nothing significant, just getting everything in line. So that does need your approval.
Hear a motion for approval of Budget Number Three?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Quayleary.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrell.
Yes.
Councilman Gaines.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manis.
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes. Budget Amendment Number Three passes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Clinton Regional Planning Commission report. Vice Mayor Gann.
The Clinton Board of Zoning and Appeals, as well as the Planning Commission met on February 13th. Good deal of business. Applicant Melissa Bowden requesting rear end setback, side setback for property located at 110 Oakwood Drive. This is for the purpose of a swimming pool. And she had letters of support from all of her neighbors, so that was approved. Applicant Church of God Prophecy Larry No requesting side setback to five feet for property located at 112 Park Avenue. This was for a storage building for some of their things, and that was approved. Michael Farley requesting left side setback to five feet for property located at 430 Mariner Point Drive. This is for a storage building, and it is at the end of a driveway, which is already in that area. So that was also approved. Jennifer Liming requesting left and right setback to seven feet for property located at 608 Eagle Ben Road. This is replacing decking that was already there and really was rotting away, and so that, that was approved. West Side Storage requesting variance for off-site parking, off-street parking for property located at 931 South Charles Severs Boulevard. This is the old brown upholstery. It is going to be a storage building, as, in fact, we'll talk about it in a second. But due to the fact it's a storage building, this request was granted because there would not be the need for parking that would be for a normal business establishment. And then the Regional Planning Commission, Alex McGrew requesting final plat review and approval for property located at 514 Cherokee Avenue. This was a, a joining of two properties into one. Or, I think, no, I think it was a split. That one was. Applicant Alex McGrew requesting final plat review and approval for property located at 230 Harbor Drive. And this also was a, a moving of property lines to try to make some situations there, and that was approved. West Side Storage requesting site plan review and approval for property located at 931 South Charles Severs Boulevard. There were a lot of discussion on this because part of what is going to be there is a, a chain link fence outside the buffer zone on Charles Severs Boulevard. And the Planning Commission requested that he put some type of blinder in that chain link so that we get a better appearance and not, not somebody driving down the road. Well, it won't, they won't be looking at a storage lot for RVs and trailers and such. Then hopefully, there'll be at least some kind of blind. And I think there was a good deal of discussion about the fact that we may try to include this in our zoning regulations at some point coming up because there's, right now, it's, it's a case-by-case basis instead of having a set guideline in place. And then Brian Flynn requesting final plat review and approval for property located at 136 Island View Road. This was to do away with the property line and combine two different lots into one. So a busy night, a number of things taken care of. Any questions?
Any questions for Vice Mayor Gann? Thanks, Larry. Clinton Utilities Board report. Councilman McBride.
I have nothing to report. I wasn't paying close attention, didn't realize that CUB did not get the report over, the monthly report. I'm not sure what the hangup is there. But I will follow up with CUB to make sure it's in the packet each month. The one thing I will note is that when you do get the December report, CUB came out of December in the negative. And if you pay attention or remember, TVA charges one hour for the biggest demand in one hour of a month. And if you'll remember back to December, around Christmas time, we had three very, very cold days. So the one hour was during those very cold days. And you've got to remember, CUB's in the business to sell electricity. But if you reflect back to the early part of December and to right after the cold snap, it warmed up. So it's almost like you paid a lot of money for that one hour, and you depend on cold snaps to last more than three days. Or you depend on heat waves in the summer to last more than three days, but they didn't. That's happened occasionally, but not very frequently. So just a note there, if you see the December report, but CUB with utility, I mean, everything's fine, but it's unusual to see the electric side to be negative. But it's unusual to have three or four cold days in a month and the rest of it being season to be warm.
Yeah, really, really cold days.
Yes, so.
Any other questions for Jim? Thanks, Jim. You have anything else, or other board?
Green McAdoo did have the MLK breakfast, and it was, Adam did a tremendous job this year, joined with the Oak Ridge chapter of the NAACP. Very, very well, it was best attended that I can remember in past history. And very well done. So, you know, applaud to Adam because he, he did an outstanding job on that.
You want to talk a little bit about Sunday?
Sunday, First Baptist Church did unveil, for lack of a better term, a commemorative marker honoring the Reverend Paul Turner for his actions in, I guess, October of 1956 in accompanying African-American students to Clinton High School. It's, it's long overdue. I was eight years old when that happened, and I'm a little bit older than eight now. So he is, he is one of the heroes of the Clinton experience, as his, as his nephew called it.
Very nice, very nice program. Thanks, Larry. Catherine?
Good evening. I'm gonna try and be short and sweet tonight, but you'll see that I gave you guys a packet of information. I just wanted to make sure that there was a clarification between what the Pearl Foundation and Historic Downtown Clinton is. The Pearl Foundation is a 501(c)(3) that we established, and it encompasses our acronym, which is the Pearl, which is Preservation, Education, Arts, Revitalization, and Leadership. And that encompasses all of Clinton, but we're doing business as Historic Downtown Clinton because we firmly believe that all of those things directly impact the downtown and help us revitalize that area. And I just wanted to give you a visual of some of the things that we're doing and all of our partnerships that we have formed in the Clinton area. And I took some time to get some information from our community leaders and all of the entities here in Clinton and what they have to say about Historic Downtown Clinton. So I hope you'll take that home and take some time to look over and read that because we're really proud of the partnerships that we've created. Another partnership that we just started is one at Clinton High School. We have 18 kids that have decided that they would like to join us in our revitalization efforts, and they have formed a Clinton High School Historic Downtown Clinton Youth Board. And to listen to some of these kids say, "We love our town. It's unique. We want to make it better for the next generation," falls right in line with everything that we're trying to do. So we're gonna involve those students in some of the projects that we have in mind and the decisions that we're making. And they're a really great energetic group of kids, so I'm really proud to partner with them. We are also partnering with a sixth grade class at South Clinton Elementary, who also reached out to us and said, "We want to be a part of this too." So they're gonna be doing some conceptual ideas for us. So they're going to be creating what they think should go in downtown as a business. And while that's conceptual, the- And while that's conceptual, the, um, the teacher that reached out to us said, "I really think it'll give your board a good idea of what kids in sixth grade think should go in a small downtown area." So they're gonna come present that to our board as well. So, um, very exciting, um, for all of these partnerships that we're creating. And as spring gets here, we're just really excited about some events that we have going on. Um, the food trucks are gonna be coming back on March twenty-eighth, we're all, I know you always ask me about that and so, um, they'll be here a little bit earlier than I told you last time, um, which is great news. And then we have our Mosaic Festival, April twenty-second, and then our Spring Antique Festival, which is May fifth and sixth. Any questions?
Any questions for Catherine?
We do still, we have, um, two grants that I'll get started on anytime I get the contract. I know you guys all know that, that what it's like to be waiting on a contract for that, so, um, we're still waiting on that as well.
Great, thanks.
I'm, I may also, uh, kind of piggyback of, back of this, uh, one of my other committees, uh, Tree Board did meet this week and their, Tree Board is being very active. They have done a survey of J.C. Park and they have determined what kind of trees we have, which ones are in good shape, which ones need treatment, which ones need to be removed. And they're doing a lot of work as far as the trees in, in the area. Those are two UT students that are doing that as part of their project. Uh, there's, you know, a lot of activity in looking at, at what trees might be, uh, may be needed or whatever. I know that there's, there's some feeling perhaps of a, the idea of, I don't know if they've talked to you, Roger, about it, about a shared arborist, maybe sharing it with Oak Ridge, Rocky Top, whatever, one that could give us some advice about some of our trees. There are some trees in J.C. Park that do need to be removed.
They, they, they haven't mentioned that, they did mention to me about the grant. I know we did it last year, so I can talk to them that we could probably do something, maybe even budget it if it's something, and, and we usually try to plant some trees every year anyway and if we can fifty-fifty get some money from the state, then we'd probably try to put some money in the budget. I think we did twenty-five-hundred dollar last year and it was a fifty-fifty matching grant, so we may put a little bit in the budget and even if we could do a little more. I mean, if it's, it's something in all the parks, we try, have tried to done every year anyway to replace trees. I know especially J.C., a lot of the older oak trees have, have kind of dwindled away over the years, but with the new Dog Park, we've added some trees there and really need to add some more. Uh, Lakefront, we put some, some new ones down there over the last couple of years and continue adding. So we'll, we'll work with the Tree Board and I think Main Street Program has been working with them too, so.
Yeah, well, I think for our part, we would like to see, um, some more trees on Main Street. I know you remember when there was more green space on Main Street and especially with Reverend Paul Turner's sign, we would love to see Main Street more walkable, um, and people enjoying that as well so they can go see the sign.
Well, we have a grant for that, we're just waiting on it.
And our tap grant adds several to, especially the Market Street and, and some to Main, but a lot to Market.
And Riley Sains is in charge of that program and he's doing a really good job. Riley is, is very active in it, I can tell.
He's enthusiastic about it.
He's enthusiastic, it's a good word for it.
Thanks Catherine.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. General Government Report, Mr. Houck.
Thank you, Mayor. The Commerce Street Parking Lot Improvements. In coordination with the Green State Project, we will be performing additional maintenance work in the lower Commerce Street Parking Lot to include crack sealing, asphalt coating and restrapping. The work will be done by the Public Works Department and a contractor for the sealing and strapping. I would request authorization to proceed with the contract portion of the project at an estimated cost of eight thousand dollars to be funded from the unassigned fund balance.
Here a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Roger, when you say this lower section, is that from the bathroom down?
That's from the bathroom down. We don't want to do anything to the upper portion because I know when we start the tap grant, we probably will be using it some for storage of equipment. And what we'd like to do, once the tap grant gets done, we'll probably do some improvements to it that we'll, we'll, uh, seal and restrap it too, so that may be a year down the road.
Any other discussion, question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. The Riverside Drive Lellon Bridge Parking. With the completion of the Lellon Bridge Project, we have lost the parking area for boat trailers. We would like to use the area between Seavers Boulevard and the Riverside Drive to build a new parking area for boat trailers. We need to complete the grade work and install base stone, rebuild a portion of the sidewalk to make the lot usable. Plans are to leave the lot as gravel surface with plans to pave within, within the next one to two years. In order to complete this project, I would request authorization for funding not to exceed ten thousand dollars to be funded from the unassigned fund balance.
Here a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
You may notice we started some of this work last, last week.
I was about to say, if we just go ahead and deny it, what are we gonna do now?
Well, with the weather nice last week, we knew it was supposed to rain this week. Dwayne wanted to kind of jump on it and get ahead of it a little bit, so, so I told him I thought we would be okay. Finance, I'll defer to Chris.
All right, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Um, so as of the end of January, we were fifty-eight percent through the fiscal year. We've received sixty-four percent of our revenue so far. And as you know, February, February will be a large, uh, property tax month, so, uh, look for that to go up. Prop, or excuse me, uh, local option sales tax is strong, I'll go over that in a second. Um, so we've spent fifty-nine percent of our budget versus fifty-eight percent of the fiscal year passing, so we're, we're staying tight to the budget. Fund balances are essentially unchanged from last month, uh, unassigned is at seven-point-nine. Currently, we've, uh, we're ahead seven-hundred thirty-one thousand revenues over expenditures for the fiscal year. And, uh, talking about local option, uh, we were up ten percent, uh, and this reflects the sales that occurred in November. So we get, we get the rev, they, uh, folks report it at the end of November. The state takes a look at it and get, we get our money in January, so, um, we were ten percent over where we were, uh, this time last year. Um, every month has been almost a ten percent increase from the prior month, from the prior year same month, so, we're doing well with local option sales tax. Um, as I mentioned before, department heads are doing a good job with keeping within their budgets. Um, we're looking at things that, uh, look like they may need some attention coming up, but so far, so good.
Any questions for Chris?
You know, it's very encouraging to see that, um, every, since the last quarter of last year, if, we were getting in the four hundreds and that was, was very, I think it was like, last year was the first time we did that. And now as, we do it for two more months, we'll have a full year of being able to front four hundred, a thousand dollars collection a month, per month.
When, when I recorded the revenue for January, I, I actually triple-checked it because it was quite a bit more than the previous month, but I, I remember it's probably Christmas sales, Black Friday and those things.
Gina wanted me to remind everybody that tomorrow is the last day, pay your property tax. If you do not pay, you will be getting a phone call from Gina, so.
It'll be a busy day at City Hall tomorrow.
I'm one of them, I need to go.
All right, any, any other questions for Chris? Thanks Chris, appreciate it.
Just to let you all know, Chris and I did start the budget, which he's been working on it for a while, but, but he did sit down with me last week. We started our budget process for next year, so we kind of get an early start on it. Uh, we'll be meeting with department heads over the next couple of weeks and I'll probably individually calling you guys and getting some input on some requests, uh, that I've had over the last month or two. Uh, then, then we'll be getting back with, uh, department heads again. We usually try to meet with them two or three times, so we'll be working on it to get it submitted to you all by the end of April, which is required by charter. Uh, one other thing I did include in your packet is something that Tennessee Municipal League has worked on for two or three years, but they really got a big push for it this year and it is the Restore Return Relief that they are pushing for. And that is to restore the state shared sales tax formula to back to the way it was in two thousand two and that's when the state legislatures changed it to give more money to the state, uh, fund. And that's when the state was in dire need of funds and it actually took local shared sales tax that, that should be coming to the local cities and kept more of it to state government. And the local, uh, TML is, is asking them to go back to the old formula which would give local sales tax back to the local governments and it's a big push statewide for them to do that. Uh, just with the city of Clinton, if it went back to the historical formula that, that was in place for forty-seven years before they changed it, it would be an additional one-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars for the city of Clinton with the current tax rate. And that would be an annual, you know, and which probably would go up actually each year. So if you, you see any of your state legislatures recommend that they vote for, for that change to go back to the, the historical two thousand two rate.
And I might add to that, Ms. Johnson and I were in a meeting Friday night with two of our state representatives. Mr. Reagan was one of them and I can't say that we got a roaring endorsement of, of this program. Basically what, what, they put it off on the fact that there's conservative old heads on the finance committee that are clogging things up. But, uh, I, I can't say that, that we really got a, a strong backing from those two legislators, so we really need to, uh, to get, get with them and, and remind them that we need, we need this to come back to us.
Is that both Reagan and McNally?
McNally was not there, he's still.
Okay, so who's the other one?
Uh, the new, he represents what, eleven county?
This is Bitter, is that it?
Yep.
Okay.
He's brand new. So he's still learning, learning the ropes, but he, he represents parts of, I think eleven counties, something like that, I think they said. He's, he actually lives in Overton County.
Yeah, I think he's in Fintridge, Campbell, Scott.
North Anderson.
Upper end, it's, 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 it's a big.
Just like, think about every city and county and we're a pretty small town still, one-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand and, and think about how much money that really is for the state. I mean, they'd be giving, it'd be billions, billions upon billions they give back to cities and counties.
One of the things that was talked about is, you know, he, he brought up the point.
Gives back our money.
Yeah, I know, I'm not saying, I'm just being, but it's a big number, I mean, it's.
It's huge.
One of the things that was brought up is they look at, uh, what Nashville and Memphis is getting and they say, "Well, look at all the waste and everything." And we said, "Well, do a graduated program." I mean, if Nashville and Memphis aren't using it well, don't penalize all of us because the big cities aren't taking care of their money like they, they should be. So, uh, I'm not sure we got through to them, but we did, we did make our point.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, have one more thing, the Police Department, our Violent Crime Intervention Fund grant award. The Police Department has received notification that it was awarded a hundred-and-forty-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-three-dollar grant with no local match. Funds from this grant will be used to purchase vehicles and equipment for the Detective Division as well as tactical equipment and advanced technology equipment. I therefore request authorization to accept and execute the grant documents and contract.
Here a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
And I'd just like to congratulate Chief Becker and I know Lieutenant Alexandra, um, and a couple of other officers worked on this grant, so.
I was gonna say, that's a good job.
Good job. And I think that's all I have, Mayor.
Anybody have any questions for Roger? Around projects or any, any updates on the projects for Roger?
Um, like I said, on the tap grant, we did finally get the environmental approval a week and a half ago, so that's moving forward. They'll be, uh, working on revising and submitting the, um, final construction documents. And so that'll be the next process on the tap grant, so hopefully we'll get that moving. Um, the pool, as I told you last month, he was hoping by early to mid-March be ready to submit to TDEC for approval on them. I did talk to him late this afternoon, uh, he said the architectural part of it was almost a hundred percent complete. Bill and I are meeting with the mechanical engineers on all our projects. We're doing a walkthrough at the pool, the armory, the fire station one, the community center all Friday. So that, that's, that'll be get that going, uh, so we'll, we'll do that, which right now the pool is kind of the priority of all four of those projects. So, because we want to get that to TDEC, submit it to them, because you gotta go to TDEC, you gotta go to the Health Department, which that can kind of go at the same time. So that's our big projects there.
Any other questions for Roger? Thanks Roger. Um, no ordinances or resolutions tonight, um, any old business before us? Any new business? I do want to thank JB, um, we do have a pickleball court now at Lakefront Park. But I'm, I'm, I'm gonna keep bringing it up till you put it online somewhere so we can advertise it. This is, this is the thirty seconds of advertisement, what's, I don't think it is.
One other thing on JB.
They put it out there, because it's a good, it's, I mean, I think people really will like, like having that.
He did have some money left over in his Christmas decoration fund, so he ordered, how many?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four new decorations for Main Street.
So if you don't like the decorations next year, call JB.
But we're still gonna revolve together.
Yes, yes.
My mother-in-law is number, oh, my wife would agree.
Any, um, we did a new business, anything else guys? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Means adjourn.